I'd like to open the meeting at 6:04. I'd like everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with whose judgment justice is sworn.
Okay. So, I'm gonna read what we published in the newspaper. The Worcester Telegram gets at the legal ad. "The Brookfield Zoning of Appeals will hold a public hearing at 6:30 Wednesday, July 19th, in the Brookfield Town Hall, first floor. The purpose of this hearing is to consider a request from Clarence Snyder to appeal the decision by the zoning enforcement officer regarding a special permit that was issued to John D. Holcroft for the property owned by him, 6 South Maple Street in Brookfield. The request asks the Board of Appeals to determine the special permit is no longer valid. This hearing is for administrative appeal. The property is located in Business A District."
Mr. Chairman, the announcement said the hearing was to start at 6:30. You are in joint file law for starting it before then?
I believe it's supposed to be the first one.
Yeah, the first one was 6 o'clock.
Second one is 6:30, third one is 7:00.
But this one, this does say...
99 Rice Corner is supposed to be first.
6 o'clock.
It does say, so is this a day one?
Yeah. For Holcroft.
She's right.
She is right. So, who's the... I just wanna get this moved.
Easy, Mr. Chairman.
No, no doubt.
Where's the 6 o'clock one?
Oh, Rice Corner. Whoops. I apologize.
Thank you, Sharon.
My mistake. Thank you, Sharon. Okay. I'd like to open the hearing at 6:05. For a public hearing, um, this is the newspaper ad. "The Brookfield Zoning of Appeals will hold a public hearing at 6:08 PM Wednesday, July 19th, at 2017, the Brookfield Town Hall, first floor banquet room. The purpose of this hearing is to consider a request from John Mansfield, the owner of 99 Rice Corner Road, to appeal a decision by the zoning enforcement officer regarding prohibitive use of his property. The hearing is for administrative appeal. This property is located in the Rural Residential District." Mr. Mansfield. Can we hear from you what your... Do you have some...
Can you both join us up here please?
Yes, please.
Both of you, please? Mr. Mansfield, do you just wanna represent him or do you want him to speak on his behalf?
If he wants to speak, and he told me he would like to speak at some point, so...
Come on up now then.
Are you gonna speak or do you want me to speak?
Go ahead. Oh, I can't hear you.
In your name, sir.
My name is Dale Kylie. I'm an attorney in North Brookfield, and Mr. Mansfield has seen me as his legal counsel on this one. So, the, um, the use regulation says that it excessively obnoxious hazardous, and then it goes on to say open-air storage of junk and salvage materials. So, I guess we just like some clarification as to what, exactly, what section you're coming under, because in the bylaw, there is no definition, anywhere in the bylaw, of what constitutes junk or salvage material. So, if that's what you're looking to enforce on this, I'm just wondering who's going to... whose objective criteria is going to define what junk is or salvage material in this new property?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to invite Mr. Thomoa, same name as one of my... While, Mr. Sir. Are you opposed to Mr. Thomoa answering that question?
Absolutely not.
Did you hear the questions, Mr. Thomoa?
I, uh, a little bit, a little bit. I just wanna go to the prohibited use all districts. I think that's the, uh, section I was citing. All uses which are excessively obnoxious, hazardous, injurious to the neighborhood, or the property in the vicinity, all open-air storage, junk, salvage material, and excerpt as otherwise provided by the bylaw, the collection, treatment, storage, burial of incineration waste, including those classified as low-level radiation waste and expressly prohibited in all zoning districts. I don't know if the board has able to go by the property, and if you guys, have you guys looked at it at all?
I have.
Uh, there is a tremendous amount, uh, number of boats, canoes, kayaks, um, just sitting there. They've been there for 20, 25 years. I have pictures, if you wanna see them. I'm saying it's injurious to the neighborhood, because it is bringing down the property value. It's an eyesore.
So, did a neighbor call you or is this just arbitrarily...
I've had numerous calls anonymously from people. They don't wanna, they don't like leaving their names, which is fine, they don't have to leave their names.
So, you were called there specifically to inspect what?
Yes.
To inspect what?
To inspect that 99 Rice Corner Road. I gave him a warning, I gave him two months to clean up his area. He said he wouldn't. I gave him a second warning, advising him that he has 30 days to clean up his, uh, property. He said he would. He failed to do so. I instituted a fine of $25 per day, just, uh, I think a week or so ago. He's been given many warnings, he just refuses to clean up his property.
He was not burning on the property?
Burning.
Was it?
No burning. I didn't see any burning, just a lot of debris and open-air storage.
So, basically, it's, it's the opinion of what junk is, and his representative is claiming we have no definition of junk?
Well, if something is laid outside for 25 years, it's gonna be junk.
Now, Mr. Mansfield represents that all those boats are usable, they've been used. The fact that they're in the same place as being stored for 25 years doesn't necessarily mean that they haven't been used occasionally for their intended purpose. All of them float, all of them are usable, all of them are, have value. So, the other thing I would like to point out to the board is the discrepancy in your bylaw between the use regulation, the prohibited uses that Mr. Thomoa just read to you.
Now, is your, do you have a current copy of the bylaws?
I have the current, the best says last amended June 2014. Is that...
Is that...
I got that from your website, so... In section C, the environmental controls in districts, uh, number one, subparagraph C, "Open-air storage areas shall be screened from any adjacent residence or public way by planting our fences. Junk, trash, or debris shall be confined out of sight." So, in the first section, you're saying open-air storage is absolutely prohibited, and in this section, you're saying you can use open-air storage provided that it's screened. And I have photographs of the residence, which shows that the boats and canoes are behind fencing.
Can the board see those?
Absolutely. Uh, some are visible above the fence line, but they're canoes in the tops of the boat, so it's not really, uh, what most people would consider trash or junk, obnoxious material.
Thank you. Can I step in?
Absolutely.
I'm gonna have to show you photos that I taken.
Do you have them on you?
Yeah, they're in the office. I'll blow it. Maybe from a different perspective.
My wife, my wife grew up in this house, doesn't look the same.
My house doesn't look the same since I bought it either. No.
I'm showing the photos right now.
Can I just move it a little?
Boy, I've seen it.
You've seen it?
Obviously, it's visible.
Are these on his property?
They're on his property. No, they're...
The pictures are on his property from the road.
Oh, no, they're from the road.
Oops, not that one. Just recite that one.
I will. Oh, man, that is, it was a very lovely picture. Yeah.
So, it's, it is visible from the road. That's my son. It is visible from the road. It is open-air storage. Oh, yeah, outdoor, yes, sir.
Did you wanna show his attorney those pictures?
Yeah, I am. I'll show the picture.
Do you have the... Just trying to see.
That's a whole folder?
Yes, the whole folder.
Not that one.
Mike didn't give props today.
Yep. Oh, that.
I hope.
Oh, that. Can I get some over here on this phone?
Huh?
On my camera? I like it, that's a nice guy. He's really a nice man.
Okay. Ah, so, the, uh, point is that it's highly visible from the road. I don't think, the boats have been used in 20, 25 years. I haven't seen any difference from where they have been located where they are now. I just wanna say Mr. Mansfield is a nice man. He's not a bad man. But there's a problem with this, with the bylaw, with the, uh, with his property right now. It's not, it's not adhering to the zoning bylaws of the town of Brookfield. And I'm just doing my job. I've got a bunch of them out there, there's others out there, and they're gonna be coming before you, and I hope that the board sees fit to adhere to the Brookfield zoning bylaws. That's what our job is. So...
I mean, if we could just get clarification for Mr. Mansfield as to exactly what items are classified as junk and which items...
So, I keep speaking for the board, and I apologize, but, and obviously, you can... Thanks, Herb. I think we're playing semantics with the word junk. Sympathy, to me, lies to a property owner with what they have on their property. They pay their taxes, they pay for their home, they live there. I do understand neighbors and whatnot. When you come in and say everything's screened and show us those pictures, and then when we see Mr. Thomoa's pictures, that's junk.
Well, what's junk? Because I see boats, but then I see a lot of debris that are not boats, so that I would agree with you, is junk. But the boats, I don't believe are junk, and that's what keeps getting cited here, so...
Are you citing him for the boat, so you would ask... That's part of it. They've been there for 25 years. I don't think they're waterworthy. They haven't been moved. I know they haven't been moved. So, I don't know why, he says he uses them, I don't believe that for one instance.
But I think, looking at the pictures, we can agree that some of those things that are there, boats, for example, have value. A lot of this stuff does not have value. So, that, uh, in the lack of definition, the bylaws problematic. But I mean, if there's things that are valueless, then should be cleaned up.
Which in the majority of Mr. Thomoa's pictures are valueless junk.
Right, but he keeps on citing the boats, which Mr. Mansfield does not wanna part with, because they have value, so...
Have you had the discussion with him in regards to the boats?
Absolutely. He said he was going to get rid of them. He said he was gonna clean up his property, he told me twice.
Boat specific?
Including boats, yes.
Yeah, his intention is to sell them, that's the intention. So, and that's why, I mean, that's why they have value. So, if he intends to sell them...
Technically, the junk has value as well for scrubbing and whatnot.
Oh, sure, it does.
Initially, I was more than lenient, I explained it to him. I said, "Two months, if you need more time, that's fine."
Has he paid any fines?
Uh, no.
Has he accrued fines?
Yes.
What's that value right now?
I think he's at, I don't know, a couple hundred dollars.
Are they still growing?
Yeah, every day. $25 a day.
Does the board have any questions, comments?
I have. Does he really intend to, um, clean this up, or is this just, just a fluff to sort, you know, just to drag along? I mean, what is his real intent?
Well, Mr. Mansfield, he came to my services two weeks ago. I didn't know him all that well. I've taken him at his word, that's his intent. He's told me that from the day he hired me, so I believe that's his intent.
Okay. If Mr. Mansfield is true in his intent, I would be more than happy to work with him.
Anybody else have any questions? Well, I'm gonna make them, I'm gonna make them.
I would like to talk to Mr. Mansfield.
I have been working on cleaning up the area. Well, one problem I do have is I have authorities who are responsible. They pushed my disc up, I had every nerve in my back, electrically destroyed. I'm in bed every day at 3:00 in the afternoon. I get up at 7:00. From 11:30 to 12:00, I eat down a single sip. I'm only good for about two and a half hours working, then I'm all done. At 3:00, I'm in bed, because I can't stand up anymore. I have been up this late for years. I'm on methanol patches every other day. As far as boats go, I said, uh, we talked about the big boat, the other boats you said you didn't care about. You also said you would not find me. Is it so far?
Well, if you show progress, but...
Well, I'm asking, what do you want me to do, and you have not come out and said anything?
I have told, we've talked, and we've spoken about that a couple of times.
Well, you've not come out and said, "You don't like this area, you don't like this." You say storage containers, what? I don't have any storage containers, oil, I don't have these storage containers with oil.
I mean, you told, I didn't say that, but you told me that you were gonna clean up the yacht.
I have cleaned up.
I haven't seen it.
Taken three trips with the van to the dumpster.
So, I guess my question for you, Mr. Mansfield, is, do you really intend on cleaning up that area?
That's right. But also put up, the board helped me out my house once, and with the animal control officer, and they didn't need two hours notice they're coming up. Board Health came up, searched the whole area. Dan, uh, said that, "I apologize, Mr. Mansfield, I can't find anything in your yacht that I couldn't find in my own yacht." You have lots of stuff here, but it's not against the law, you have lots of stuff. You look like a... Put up a fence, put everything on the other side of the fence, honest I got them on. I did exactly what they told me. No, Mr. Thomoa said, "You gotta watch it." First, he said, "Let me see, uh, that boat, the big boat, it's junk, it's gotta go. You can't move it anymore, it's probably, it's junk, it's gotta go." That's it. When was the last time you had that up? I said, "Last year." Okay, I'll let that slide, he says. Uh, you got lots of things in your yacht, and you're gonna be getting rid of lots of things in your yacht, and I'm gonna give you what it tells you, what you eat and what you can't eat. Well, you know, if I buy something and put it on my truck, and it's not hazardous anyway, and it's behind the fence, what are you doing coming around behind my fence, seeing what I have? Do you go behind, do you have aerial surveillance, do you go and check up the dirty property out behind fences now? They told me when I put the fence up, it didn't load. I put the fence up, it didn't load.
So, so, Mr. Thomoa, do the fences that he put up cover, so it doesn't fall over?
It's not covering up with my cargo, and I said, "Would you like me to put a gate up so I can't see through?" He said, "No, don't wish to murder."
Who's they, they told you to put the fence up?
Who told me to put the fence up? Dan. Uh, Dan O'Donnell.
From the, uh, Board Health? Yeah. Okay. Well, it all falls on Mr. Thomoa, his zoning enforcement officer. That's what he's doing.
But I think, I think, when you say semantics, the problem is going to lie in the fact that there is no objective criteria to determine what junk is.
To me, sitting on this board, if it's visible and it's junk as we perceive through Mr. Thomoa's pictures, he's, he's not following the bylaws.
I'm gonna ask your decision to make that...
And I'm more than happy to work with Mr. Mansfield. If he shows a big intent, I'll...
How many days, Nick, do you think it would take him to clean everything up to...
Well, obviously, he's gonna need help. He can't do it by himself. I know, but he can...
So, how long to help?
How long?
30 days?
60 days?
I gave him two, over two months.
He already has 60 days?
Yes. But I'll give him even more if he shows up...
Do we have any other questions? Because I'm gonna make a motion.
No.
Any other questions?
No more questions?
Questions? I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, this board forgives the fines that have accrued, that within 60 days, Mr. Mansfield will clean his property or come into compliance with the bylaws, and the cleaning will be acceptable to the zoning enforcement officer or the bylaws. After 60 days, the fine for $25 will start per day until it is cleaned.
I wanna stop you before this goes further. Just understand that I have given him two months plus, and that I am willing to work with him to get this done.
And that's what this board is doing as well.
I would rather have it not stayed in that way. I would work with Mr. Mansfield, one-on-one.
Until it's done.
Until it's done, but...
So, why is this before us?
Because he appealed to you guys.
So, why didn't you work with him before filing?
I was trying to. I gave him two warnings.
You don't want any teeth in...
Oh, I want teeth, but I wanted...
So, a 60-day limit is teeth? So, that's immediate?
The way I, the way I'm hearing the motion is that he gets another 60 days?
Correct.
When they're saying four months.
It was just brought to our attention this evening.
Well, this board. Okay.
That's all we... I'd like to see teeth in it, I'd like to have a time period, I'd like to forgive the fees.
I can work with him on that.
Because that 200, while this board, through our motion, if it's accepted and voted on, it's forgiven. That $200 could be hired to hire someone, like, someone that sits in this room to come in and take care of it in two hours.
I can work with Mr. Mansfield and forgive his fines if he cleans up the property.
Make an attempt.
I'm just looking for an attempt.
I have been working on the property, and I'm taking three walks to the dump.
But it's hard by yourself, I understand that. I know it's, it's hard for you, I know it's hard.
No, it's not hard for you, I built a van a whole time.
You said it's hard for you, and I believe you.
I'm not asking to be a kid, I'm just saying what it is. And I paid the receipts for those.
I made a motion, there was discussion, I don't know if it's a second?
I'll second it. All in favor?
Well, discussion on the motion. We have discussion on the motion? You have a discussion? You all come?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
In the air.
In the air. So, you get 60 more days.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have a date on that? From today?
From today.
All right. They'll be in the notes, huh? For the minutes?
Yes.
Thank you.
From today.
Yep. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Yes. All in favor? Aye. 6:29 to adjourn. So, we're holding it for days?
Yeah-hoo.
Chairman, it's gotten kind of warm in here, with a fan going, if you guys don't talk loud, we can't hear. So, let's put the fan on. You guys, you're a little loud.
Oh, I think you can hear me, Colonel, when I talk.
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm sorry, Colonel.
You got that? Where's Bill?
Um, he's gone to some show with...
Vacation?
Yeah.
No.
You haven't seen them?
No. No, I'm not there yet. This is what I should be.
Nothing's gonna happen.
Door open?
No.
We need to give it.
All right. Well, you and I both know that, but I mean, just try to give the man some, you know? Anyway, I guess... Yep. And it's like this... Right. There's 200, it's always gonna be, you know, where? You know? Probably finds out, and then he gets out, it's gonna be, you know, 5,000. I'd like to open up the hearing. It's at 6:30. The Brookfield Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at 6:30 Wednesday, July 19th, 2017, the Brookfield Town Hall, first floor. The purpose of this hearing is to consider a request from Clarence Snyder to appeal a decision by the zoning enforcement officer regarding a special permit that was issued to John D. Holcroft for the property owned by him at 6 South Maple Street in Brookfield. The request asks the Board of Appeals to determine the special permit is no longer valid. This hearing is for administrative appeal. The property is located in Business A District. Mr. Snyder?
Yes. What I'd like to do, seeing as I was an attorney and then, I'd like to pass over this, the chronology of events that you were taking up in about a minute, if that's acceptable to your point of view. Mr. Chairman, I'd like, I spoke to you, I want a continuation, and I have counsel here. I spoke to you, and I addressed the frontboard as well, before you get started here, so...
Well, I think what I'd like to do, and I can only speak for myself, in the sense that I would like to take information, um, as well from everybody while we're here, everyone's come out to do this, um, and just put together, you know, take evidence, arguments about this whole thing.
I initially got in front of my, my counsel's here.
And he will... We won't necessarily, we don't know if we're gonna make a decision tonight or not, David. I mean, it's, if we continue it, we'll continue it, and you can have your lawyer at that point.
But we did. You said... I'm gonna leave the meeting then, that's what you're gonna be?
Mr. Chairman, before...
I'm requesting, I'm requesting a...
I mean, I'm requesting, Mr. Chairman, I may be hurting you one moment. Before he leaves the meeting, I'd like you to know I called him Monday, and yesterday, asked him the name and address and phone number of his attorney so I could speak with him. He hung up on me both times. Asked him to call me back with the information. He wouldn't call me back.
I don't have to do that.
He hung up on me twice.
No one hung up on you, Dave.
Yes, he did.
Dave, Dave, can we just ask you to stay here and listen?
No, because I asked, and I asked, I spoke to you in the front office for a continuation of mine. So, I have the right, I'm...
If you do.
Allegations against me, I have the right to have representation here, okay?
So, you don't wanna participate in any discussion tonight?
No, I'm not gonna participate, so...
Mr. Chairman, I don't feel...
I'm requesting... Excuse me, I'm speaking, sir. I'm requesting a continuation, so if you'd like to give it to me, fine, if you don't, that's fine.
Do you understand?
I'm asking for an answer.
Mr. Chairman, may I just ask through you, Mr. Chairman, to the board, has Mr. Holcroft given you the name and address of his attorney?
No.
No. He wouldn't give that to me when I called him Monday morning with Mr. Snyder in my office. I called him at 10:30 Monday morning, asked him that question. He said he was in the veterinarian's office, he called me back. He didn't call back. I called him yesterday morning. He hung up on me, said he didn't have to give me the information. So, Franklin, Mr. Chairman, I don't think he has an attorney, I think this is just a stalling tactic.
Mr. Chair, I personally believe Mr. Holcroft has an attorney. Me personally, I'd like to hear what Mr. Snyder has to say, either through himself or through counsel. After that, I would make a motion to ask for Mr. Holcroft's continuing, so he can have a temporary present, whatever I think.
No, no, no.
Mr. Chairman, Holcroft...
It's time. It's time.
Holdcraft, please. Chairman, may I refer on the request of selectmen?
Selectmen, I want to say, but thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm... With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, number one, if I represent a party, I wouldn't have notified the selectmen that I wanted a continuance, I would have notified you. The continuance is subject to your discretion. You have, I imagine you have a group of people here to hear this case tonight. So the fact that Mr. Holdcraft is waiting till the last minute to request a continuance, he's not giving you the name of the attorney, he wouldn't give me the name of the attorney Monday and yesterday, this is nothing but a stalling tactic. Now, all these people have taken time, I just drove two and a half hours from Boston to be here, and I, I request that you deny the motion for continuance here tonight. But Mr. Holdcraft can have his attorney here.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask that if, if people can't be controlled in this room, without police officers, that they be removed from this room? That this is a...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, was that directed to me?
No, not at all. No, to the, to the crowd.
Mr. Chairman, I did speak to you directly.
Yes, you did speak to me.
This attorney's gonna stand up here and lie and make allegations against me, which he just did, that you have an attorney, and I also spoke to you, did I?
Yes, you did.
And I also spoke to the front room, so I'm not gonna sit here and listen to this guy come in here and lie, okay?
No, but, Mr. Chairman, I can assure you, I wouldn't lie to this board. It doesn't, no, I mean, he did speak to me about continuing the, um, this meeting. My thing was, it was, it's, you know, it's administrative appeal, and I can appreciate, uh, Mr. Holdcraft, but we also have to take in information, David, to make our own, to make a, you know, educated decision on what's going on. And if we continue this and continue it, then we're not gonna get anywhere very quickly.
You're not continuing it at all?
No, but if we do it, we won't.
If this is the first time...
If we continue it, we're gonna go nowhere. So, no, we're, we're gonna continue along, and we're gonna hear what people have to say, and we're gonna go from there. We're gonna continue with this meeting. Mr. Chairman, could, when this attorney Brackett could represent me and share with you additional information on that, which you can give us... What is your attorney's name? Yes, Gary Brackett, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Gary Brackett, from Brackett Lucas, Nineteenth Cedar Street, Worcester.
Do you have a business card?
I have some of the cards, sir, but I'd be happy to provide that information.
For the secretary?
All my information should be included, uh, obviously, in the package, but I'll be happy to provide it to you. Something's coming along. Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make my presentation, if that's, can I pass these down, sir? There's one for, there should be one for each of you, and one for your secretary for your minutes. She's a board member. Now, I'll provide one to Mr. Holdcraft in the absence of attorney, so he can give us his attorney.
Mr. Martin, Mr. Chairman, are you gonna continue this meeting or not? That's all I wanna know.
Yes, I am.
Are you not gonna continue?
I am, yes, I am continuing the meeting.
If you haven't got the presentation, then to me, it sounds like you're gonna have a hearing.
We are gonna continue the meeting, yes, we're gonna have the hearing.
When I have counsel here?
Yes, we're gonna continue the meeting now.
What, what does that mean, explain that to me?
We're gonna, we're, we're having the meeting right now. Did you, Cousins, right, is that?
I'm continuing it now.
No, we're not at this point.
Oh, you just said you were.
After we collect information, we have conversation, we may or may not continue the meeting, David, that's the bottom line.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna take that as an open, I don't give you a C.O., but... Bye-bye!
Here we go. Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, just by winter introduction, I've been a public attorney for forty-two years now, serving at the state and, and, town, I'm sorry, at the city and town level. Oh, I'm sorry, are people having trouble hearing?
Yeah.
I wonder if...
Oh, okay.
No, I guess that's, uh, yeah. That's not public.
Just briefly, by way of introduction, Mr. Chairman, uh, I've been a public attorney for forty-two years, serving at the city and town level, representing communities around the state and private clients such as Mr. Snyder. I've been working with the zoning statute since it was adopted as chapter eight oh eight of the Acts of nineteen seventy-five by the Massachusetts Legislature. And during that time, I've been involved with zoning review, zoning opinions to planning boards, zoning boards, conservation commissions, and I just, I'm just returning now from a hearing for the land court on a zoning case. Uh, Mr. Chairman, this case represents some fairly straightforward issues. I prepared a chronology of events for you with attached documents I'll refer to during the course of my presentation. I have also included, uh, the very last page of that package is what I refer to as just a brief statement of legal elements, and those are the statutory references that I'll refer to, all of which are embodied in your Brookfield zoning bylaw, and that's required by state statute. Briefly, Mr. Chairman, starting July thirteenth, two thousand three, the zoning board issued a special permit for a second principal use, and the highlights of that special permit, and the special permit is attached as numbered pages one and two. The highlights are that the special permit is issued for a period of two years, subject to renewal for another two-year period. Uh, there's a description within the special permit, that the shed was to be eight feet wide, twenty-seven feet long, eight feet high. The sign was to conform to the town zoning bylaws. No items left outside of the building anytime. I'll stress that, no items to be left outside the building anytime. I just drove by the property on my way in, and here's, that condition is not being adhered to. If you look at the decision itself, Mr. Chairman, this was proposed on numbered page one, this was allowed as a so-called second principal use. Normally, you're only allowed to have one principal use on the property. So this was allowed by special permit. It was supposed to be a retail service for charitable reasons, and to conduct the business from a shed. Uh, I point out on numbered page one, on item number ten, a sign stating retail service for charitable reasons, which will conform to the town's zoning bylaws. And as I mentioned on numbered page two, paragraph thirteen, the special permit's issued for a period of two years, subject to renewal for another two-year period, upon the applicant's compliance with all the conditions in this permit on the operation of the business during the permit period. So, Mr. Chairman, the chronology continues that on or about May twenty-fourth, two thousand five, which is almost two years after the special permit was issued, a building permit was issued for a sign, and that's on numbered page three, and you'll see the sign, actually, the building permit application was submitted, all we've been able to find is one signed by Mr. Holdcraft. We haven't been able to find one signed by the building inspector actually issuing a building permit. But the, the sign, the area of volume on numbered page three, was supposed to be four by eight, or approximately thirty-two square feet, estimated cost three hundred and fifty dollars. Now, Mr. Chairman, on June second, two thousand five, the next item on the chronology, numbered page six, you'll see this, another decision of the zoning board, and that says that members of the zoning board voted at their meeting last night for an extension for John Holdcraft to build a shed, as agreed to almost two years ago. The shed will be twenty-seven feet by eight feet with a thirty-six inch wide door, so the, the dimensions of the shed have changed from the original decision. The original agreement was July seventeenth, two thousand three, this extension is good until December thirty-one, two thousand five. Now, one thing I'll point out, Mr. Chairman, is this extension doesn't request an extension of the two-page special permit that we just reviewed that was issued on July thirteenth, two thousand three. The only thing it does is allow for an extension of the shed. So, Mr. Chairman, just as a matter of straightforward zoning law, the original special permit expired two years after it was issued, and the only extension was granted on June second, and that wasn't extended for another two years, as was originally discussed in two thousand three. It says, the agreement was this extension is good until December thirty-one, two thousand five. So, by the terms of your previous decisions, Mr. Chairman, and appears that neither one of them was appealed by Mr. Holdcraft, he has a right to appeal a decision to zoning board within twenty days after the decision is filed in the town clerk's office. So he did not appeal this extension. It's only six months, it's only for the shed. As of the end of the original two-year period, the allowance of the sign is no longer in force and effect. So, Mr. Chairman, I point out that the next numbered page on the chronology, of page seven, is the building permit for the shed. Now, once again, I'll point out, and this is important for you to consider, that, uh, the extension was granted in July of two thousand five, the original permit was granted in July of two thousand three, but Mr. Holdcraft waited until November two thousand five, about two months before the special permit was gonna expire, to get a building permit. Why he waited for that period of time is beyond me, but, um, he hasn't exercised the rights on the original special permit, and he's waiting until less than sixty days before the expiration of the extension. So, as of December thirty-one, two thousand five, the special permit for the shed has expired. Now, fast forward, Mr. Chairman, to March twentieth of this year, Mr. Snyder, after consulting with me, made a request for zoning enforcement to the building inspector, and, um, he recites on numbered page nine, down the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see that he recites the chronology I've just given you, the July sixteenth, two thousand three special permit regarding a sign conforming to the bylaws. It's issued for two years, June two thousand five extension, um, the extension is good until December thirty-one, two thousand five, it also notes the following information, John Holdcraft does not have a building permit as of this date, no shrubs have been planted as agreed upon. Well, Mr. Chairman, in the original decision, it said that he couldn't get an extension until all the conditions of the original decision were met, but this is an acknowledgement that the conditions of the original decision hadn't been met, but an extension was granted anyway. But neither Mr. Holdcraft nor the other butter appealed, so that extension was allowed. But all his rights under the special permit expired as of December thirtieth, two thousand five. So Mr. Snyder then recites that since the special permit on numbered page ten and subsection D, the special permit expired on December thirty-one, two thousand five, Holdcraft never sought a further extension of the original July sixteen, two thousand three special permit, nor has he sought a new special permit for the business under the current Brookfield zoning bylaw. Therefore, the current operation of a retail service for charitable reasons and the associated signage are illegal uses in the zoning district. Because, Mr. Chairman, if they're not allowed as a matter of right, and the special permit's expired, they can't continue to exist. So Mr. Snyder requested that you, the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Zono, issue a zoning enforcement officer pursuant to the statute forty-eight, section seven, and the zoning bylaw of Brookfield, section twelve A, order the removal forthwith of the business shed and signage from the premises. And then I also asked, uh, Mr. Snyder asked that Mr. Tomo, I'm sorry, um, provide him with a response within fourteen days, which is what the statute provides. If you submit a written request for enforcement, the zoning enforcement officer or the building inspector is supposed to give you an answer within fourteen days. On the next numbered document, bottom right-hand corner, it's page number eleven, and Mr. Tomo did respond on April third, and he stated, uh, to Mr. Snyder, he requested a cease and desist, zoning enforcement officer, um, an investigation inspection of the premises was completed, and then he states, after reviewing the special permit, Mr. Holdcraft received, it should be noted, it was given for charitable business of the shed. The sign required a permit, which was given to Holdcraft in May of two thousand five, required a building permit for a shed, which was given in November two thousand five. Then he states, reviewing the order of conditions, Mr. Chairman, would you like me to wait until the member returns, or... Um, if you wouldn't mind just giving, giving him a couple of minutes of the... I just want you to get caught up looking at those documents. Yes, yes.
Mr. Chair, I wanna point out, as a sidebar, that any discussion among other members while someone is talking also gets picked up by the camera.
Mm-hmm.
So, correct. You should be aware of cross-talk, thank you. Those are very sensitive mics.
Can I get a minute, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
In the enforcement order, uh, Mr. Tomo does address, he says, reviewing the order of conditions, the following conditions are in violation, no items will be left outside the building anytime. Item number six, landscaping according to submitted blueprint along Route Nine and High Street to hide from view what's on the property has not been completed. Condition number ten, a sign stating retail service for charitable reasons, which will conform to the town zoning bylaws, is not in place. Consequently, as a result of the investigation inspection, cease and desist order will be issued to Mr. Holdcraft. And the next document you have is, five days later, Mr. Tomo issues a cease and desist order to Mr. Holdcraft, um, and if you'll note on numbered page thirteen, it was received in hand by Mr. Holdcraft, it's noted there, April eighth, at seven twenty-two AM, uh, delivered by the constable, Mr., I believe that's Mr. Lupieri, Constable...
I'm sorry, Lapierre.
Lapierre, thank you. Constable of Brookfield. And in that, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Tomo once again repeats the violation of the three conditions, and then the bottom paragraph on numbered page twelve, you'll see, you're hereby notified, you're in violation of condition two, six, and ten of the special permit. You are hereby ordered, and this is underlined, to bring the property into compliance with the conditions of the August eighteen, two thousand three special permit, including appropriate landscaping and signage. And it states, if you fail to bring the property into compliance as indicated by June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, which is nineteen days ago, uh, the town will take any and all necessary action to enforce this order, including the filing of suit in a court of competent jurisdiction. Please be advised that we no further notice before commencement of any suit, and there's notice... Please be advised that we no further notice before commencement of any suit and as notice of a right to appeal." And that's a requirement under the statute. You have a right within 30 days from an order or a decision of a building inspector to appeal to this zoning board. And Mr. Holdcraft chose not to take that appeal. So, Mr. Chairman, at a minimum, the building inspector's cease and desist order is final. It can't be challenged before you in this proceeding because Mr. Holdcraft hasn't taken an appeal. The only issue we have before you in this appeal, and if I could direct you to numbered page 15. And you'll see that this is a copy of the letter that Mr. Snyder sent to the zoning board of appeals, filing the appeal within the 30 days of the building inspector's decision. And you'll see that the reason he's taking the appeal was because in his original request for enforcement, he raised the issue that the special permit was expired. If the special permit's expired, frankly, you don't have to seek enforcement of the conditions. The conditions have expired. So, Mr. Snyder presented to the zoning board, which is the subject of tonight's hearing, "I am aggrieved by the decision. I request a public hearing on the appeal." He notes in paragraph 3, "The response did not address the primary issue of whether the special permit had expired on December 31, 2005 by the express terms of the June 2, 2005 decision of the zoning board of appeals." Mr. Chairman, the next document is numbered page 16. "In the same way, I reached out to Mr. Holdcraft Monday morning and again yesterday morning. And I called him on my cell phone, and he answered the phone. And Monday morning, he said he was in the veterinarian's office. I asked him if I could have the name and phone number of his attorney. He said he was in the veterinarian's office. He called me back." Not getting a call back. I called him again yesterday morning, and he said I had no right to know who his attorney was. I said, "I just wanted to call the attorney, speak to him before tonight's hearing, and to determine if I could, the reason for the request for continuance. If he had another scheduled meeting, or if there's some personal conflict, or he's on vacation, those are all valid reasons to continue the hearing." I just had a hearing last night in the town of Lester. One of the zoning board members couldn't attend. They only had three members. They couldn't proceed. The hearing was continued at 4:30. It was originally scheduled for 7:00. So, Mr. Chairman, continuances are fairly routine, but the reason I made the phone call to him was just to try to find out who his attorney was. The reason I sent the letter to Mr. Blake was, from your law firm, Copeland Page, your town council, is just to introduce myself and indicate that if he had received any documents, I'd be happy to review them with him before tonight, if he was attending tonight. If he had any questions, we could talk. I wasn't asking him to make a decision on your behalf, but just as a courtesy. I spoke to him this morning. He advised me that he had not been requested to attend the meeting, has not been requested to review the issue. So, I said, "If the matter is referred to you and it's continued to another meeting, I'd be happy to talk to you in the interim." Mr. Chairman, the last page, page number 17, is a set of photographs that Mr. Snyder took regarding the property. There's one photograph on the left is noted prior to July 14th. And there are two photos here showing two different vantage points of the property at 7:55 in the morning on July 16th. And, Mr. Chairman, my understanding is that Mr. Tomo, the zoning enforcement officer is currently reviewing his options for enforcement. He has three options. Under your bylaw, he can pursue noncriminal ticketing as a starting point for the past 19 days of violation because obviously there's been no compliance. If that doesn't work, he can go to the East Brookfield District Court, file a criminal action for violation of the town zoning bylaw. And that can be, you can obtain fines up to $300 a day, and that carries a criminal record with it. It is a criminal violation to violate the town bylaw, but you have a noncriminal ticketing method as the first step. The third option, Mr. Chairman, and I've been involved in these matters myself, or I've done all three, advise the building inspector, start with tickets. That doesn't work. We'll go to district court, get a clerk magistrate's hearing for the issuance of a criminal complaint. And at the same time, if it's something that's injurious to people in the neighborhood, or it's affecting the quality of life of neighbors or people in the community, you can go to Superior Court and get an injunction. And, Mr. Chairman, if we were in court tomorrow morning in front of a judge for an injunction, and if Mr. Holdcraft tried to put up a defense, well, number one, he didn't appeal the cease and desist order within 30 days, so that's fine. He's in violation of those three conditions at a minimum. He decided to walk out tonight. Frankly, it's a rare occurrence when I've seen that happen to somebody involved in a public hearing, especially a zoning enforcement issue. But you don't have the name of an attorney, you don't have the phone number of attorney or an address. In my experience, Mr. Chairman, if I was the town council and I was aware that someone was seeking continuance, the request would be, have your attorney direct a letter to the chairman. The continuance is at the discretion of the board. Because once you've given public notice of this hearing and people show up, you have to weigh the reason for the continuance versus the inconvenience to the applicant, Mr. Snyder, and the members of the public. And you have a right to say no to a continuance if the reason isn't good enough, or you don't want to postpone this any longer. So, Mr. Chairman, the next page, this briefly, the statement of legal elements. This is just to let you know, under chapter 40A, section 9, which governs special permits, and the Lester, I'm sorry, the Brookfield zoning bylaw has to comply with 40A, section 9. It specifically says, "And such permits may also impose conditions, safeguards, and limitations on time or use." So, the special permit that was granted in 2003 had an expiration date of two years. If the zoning board wanted to make it open-ended, they would not have put a two-year expiration date on it. They said you can have it for two years. And if you want to extend it, you have to come into extending. They were authorizing an extension up to two years. The extension was only sought for six months. Now, I don't have any control over that, and I don't know if any of you members were on the board back at that time, but that's what was requested, that was granted. Between 2005 and the present, there's been no further request for extension. There's been no further request to submit a new application for special permit if your bylaw's been changed in any way. The second citation is 40A, section 7, request for zoning enforcement. That's the statute that we have used along with the Brookfield zoning bylaw when Mr. Snyder filed his initial request. And chapter 40A, sections 8 and 15 govern the procedure for what's called an administrative appeal. You first have to, if you don't like the decision of a building inspector or a zoning enforcement officer, you first have to appeal it to this board. And then, if you're aggrieved by a decision of this board, you can appeal to the land court or to the superior court. But there's a requirement for that internal appeal first before going to the court. So, Mr. Chairman, happy to answer any questions of the board, or I'll be happy to wait until you've heard from the public, or...
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
From what I'm hearing on his defense, and this is through the chair having a discussion with him, is that there's a 10-year statute of limitations. Is that true? Is there case law or not?
10-year statute of limitations as to what? Zoning enforcement?
Correct. Well, in regards to his variance. Which I'm gonna...
Special perm.
Which I'm gonna even use a date of 2005 as opposed to 2003.
No, there's actually a, I don't know if you get any of that from Mr. Holdcraft, but...
No, no. No, this is from, we spoke, I spoke with Jeff Blake at Copeland and Page. And this is just 40, section 4, 40A, section 7, there's a statute. He said 10-year and a five-year. And he was driving, so he couldn't.
Okay. Yeah, actually, that's a different situation, Mr. Chairman, and three of us, different complies. The 10-year and six-year statute of limitation under 48.7 relates to a building permit. Or if you put up a building without a building permit, there's a 10-year statute of limitations for, to remove it if it was put up illegally. If it's put up with a building permit, there's a six-year statute of limitations. But these were put up under a special permit. So, there's no statute of limitations on enforcement of a special permit. So, that's a difference. If you were solely talking about a building, if someone put up a building illegally and you just discovered it yesterday, it's nine years old, you could go after it if they never got a building permit. If it's nine years old and they had a building permit and there's no special permit involved, then technically they'd be grandfathered. But that doesn't apply here.
Thank you, sir.
I don't have any more questions. Any questions?
Did everybody sign in?
No.
Do we have a, do we have a pad of paper?
Mr. Chairman, one thing. After he was given the cease and desist, and given that second warning, a reminder, and is given, I did give him a fine status up two or three days ago, correct, July 1st, $25 a day for noncompliance.
So, it started on July 1st?
Just for clarification.
No, this is for everybody in the board. Yeah. The sign up is kind of come around, so make sure you sign up that you're here.
So, for clarification, I think everybody has turned this hearing into a yellow sign hearing. From what I'm seeing, this has nothing to do with the yellow sign.
Mr. Hapwa, Mr. Hapwa, I live across the street.
Through the chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I say it for sure. I live at number 9, South Maple Street, right hitting corner to this. I know this has nothing to do with the sign. And at this point, if I could get rid of the sign, I would love it. But what, I was here in town 2003 with 50 other people wanting to know what was going to happen on that space when Mr. Holdcraft wanted to put his stuff out there. We were told it would be inside. We would, we were told there would be plantings. There has never been any of that. When we complained to either, it was either the zoning enforcement, which was not Mr. Tomo at the time, or the building inspector, we were told we had to file a complaint, and we couldn't do it anonymously. Mr. Holdcraft doesn't, he'll bug you if he knows that you have complained about him. So, I'm looking at the junk every single day when I leave my home. My friends have to look at the junk. My family has to look at the junk. And we were told it was going to be screened inside or whatever. Those things have never happened.
I agree 100%. There's three conditions that I feel that he's in violation of. The three conditions that are laid out. My only issue, the irony is, is the gentleman, and I won't mention the name, sitting behind you, that the town's gone after, well, not gone after, not been able to help because of bylaw violations from a dealership right, right down the street. My only issue is the law. And from what we're being told from KMP, there might be a statute of limitations on here that the town didn't follow.
How many years?
Huh? Well, that's, I don't, from what we're being told, it's, there's not even a statute of limitations.
Yeah, from what we're told, but I mean, this is still, I mean, we, I...
So, from what I'm, from what I'm seeing, when she's stating that there's 50 people, and it's well documented that back in '03, there were 50 people here, he had 14 orders of condition. Three of those are still not in effect. One of them stated that he has two years and they can refile, which he did back on June 2nd of '05. They gave him another date. He did put up the shed. He filed for that permit. It was installed. But I don't know if those conditions carry forward with that original, if there's a statute of limitations. But as far as I'm concerned, if they're still in effect, he's in violation of those three limitations, of those stipulations, those three conditions.
Well, the thing that bothers me the most is he's saying his own building permit.
Charlie, can I make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that, well, I'd like to cut to the chase, and I'd like to make a motion that we consider whether, that we consider whether the primary, consider the primary issue of the appeal, which was whether the special permit has expired.
Correct. Yes. I second that motion.
So, for discussion, what would, what would that motion do?
We would vote on whether the, on the primary issue, which is whether the special permit has expired.
But you're asking a question through the motion, there's no ways, we have to have structure to move forward. No offense, but it's just an open-ended...
And at this stage of the game, I'm not comfortable making a decision on this, my personal self, without talking with Copeland and Page, just to make sure that we were in legal standings, you know, with that decision.
So, I would ask that both you gentlemen withdraw, withdraw your motion in second, and maybe I'll make a motion that we continue this until Copeland and Page gives a determination on the status of, I want to say, the...
Of whether the special permit has expired or not.
And if the condition, and if the conditions still need to be met legally.
Well, if the special permit has expired, it seems like that's a moot point.
So, if you think if it's expired, he doesn't have to follow those conditions?
No. He, he's in violation, his business and his shed and everything else there is in violation.
So, through the motion, we want to ask an opinion from KP. We want to be very precise on what that question is.
Well, if the special permit has expired, then anything he's doing there that we can see at this address called 6 Maple that actually doesn't exist...
I just spoke with the...
But we all know where it is. That is not supposed to be there. He can always ask for another special permit.
So, the motion is to seek, seek an opinion from KP in regards to whether the...
Well, that wasn't my motion, but you feel more comfortable about checking with Copeland and Page first.
Yes.
So, to continue and seek an opinion from KP in regards to both variances and orders of conditions?
Right, if, yes, if, you know...
Because he might find something above and beyond what we're requesting, so if we kind of keep it broad, he'll, he'll do a bigger search.
Well, I think, I think... I'm sorry, just for the record, I recommend that's to reflect, if there's going to be a motion that relates to the special permit and the extension, there are no variances involved. Right, there's no special permits.
So, the motion would be to review the special permits and to give an opinion in regards to...
Whether they are expired or not.
And, and in term...
Anything else they want to say is fine.
What would happen to the three conditions that...
Well, that's, that's really, that's really a moot point, and that's begging this thing to continue on. But if they have anything else whatsoever to say about it, that would be useful, I'm sure, for the town.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get, is as much as follows.
Yes, to protect the town that we make the right decision.
Because as we sit, as we sit here, I think we all think that he's in violation of all three conditions.
No, I think the special permit has expired, and that's a moot point.
Which he would be in violation of the three conditions, that's...
Right. And I'm just not sure, I'm not comfortable with the whole conversation that I had with the, with the lawyer from Copeland and Page, that there might possibly be some gray areas there. And we don't know that, because, and I spoke to him, and he's driving down the road, so he couldn't tell me, he was not sitting in his office in front of... He didn't have any information, he was driving. And there's some gray areas, and I just don't want to make, you know, I want to make the right decision, I want to make an educated decision.
So, I'm going to let you make... I'm going to withdraw my motion, I'm going to let you make a motion, because you had the discussion with him.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we continue this meeting and speak with Copeland and Page in regards to the special permit granted to Mr. Holdcraft on the 3rd of, what is the date here?
Well, there's two.
Yeah, there's two. I want to find out...
It'll be the last one, though, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, yeah, the '05, but in '03, what was attached to the '03 special permit, is that still part of the '05 special permit? And what is, do they still exist? Is there a time limit on this or what? And that's, I mean, that's, I don't know what else to say.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, please.
Address through the chair to Mr. Snyder. Do you have a, to your knowledge, has Copeland and Page already been involved with this appeal?
They have been informed that we would be here tonight and that we were reaching out to them for any clarifications or any support.
Uh-huh. Okay.
So, we've done what we thought was the best.
Mr. Tomo, have you reached out to KP?
Uh, no.
What I'm concerned about is a group of people that are here this evening. Many notes anonymous, but were very reasonably bugged aside. And I think that these people deserve... but very reasonable, bug the sign, and I think that these people deserve an opportunity to make a comment to the board as to the feelings that they have related to what's gone on at Six Maple for a very long time. It's my position that that operation no longer has a permit, no longer had a permit as of 2003, certain grace periods or whatever was allowed in 2005 to build the shed or whatever, but as of the end of 2005, he had nothing.
And that's why we're here tonight.
And that's what we're trying to get an opinion from KP for, and I think everyone in this room mirrors her voice. Correct? Correct?
Can I say something? Can I say something real quick?
Go ahead, Herb.
I got paperwork here from Copeland and Page, that signs stuff up there at that address of John David Hulcraft, what he has put on there about me is a hostile work environment. I have paperwork here from Copeland and Page stating that.
Mr. Chairman, I just inquire, is that a legal opinion provided to, sir, you and in your official capacity?
Yes, it is.
He's the highway superintendent.
So, so Mr. Chair, I don't think that has anything to do with this conversation?
No, it does not, and we all know what the big yellow sign means. Mr. Fagin?
A couple of questions, if I could.
Yes.
One to Mr. Tomo. After tonight, in your role of zoning enforcement officer, what do you do?
Well, unfortunately, we might have to wait a year of fines being accrued before we take it to the next step. I'm going to call Mr. Blake to confirm that, but I might have to wait a little bit. The fines are accruing daily right now.
If, if, Michael, so have you gone to court in East Brookfield, what, I don't quite...
That's going to be the next step, will be another step that's...
Well, it only started on July 1st. He was given until June 30th.
He's $425 in the hole today. Mr. Chairman, with all due respect to the zoning enforcement officer, there's no requirement, there's no requirement that you wait a year to begin a court enforcement. One question I had through you to him, if I may, is, I don't have the bylaw in front of me, but usually a non-criminal ticketing bylaw has a fine for the first violation, then the fine goes up to the second violation, and then for the third or any subsequent violation. So I'm just curious, through you and Mr. Tomo, what is the, what is the scale of violations on the ticket process? First violation, second, third?
$25 a day right now.
But what about a second, third, or 10th, or 15th, or 20th violation?
Well, I think it can go up to $250 a day.
Mr. Fagin?
Okay, I have another question. The legal opinion that you were looking at, is that a public document that you read from tonight?
No, there's notes that I had just jotted down from when I was speaking with Jeffrey Blake from Copeland and Page. This is just my notes as I was speaking to him.
Mr. Chairman, I would just a further comment, just for Mr. Tomo's benefit, having worked with the statute, the reason non-criminal tickets were adopted was because the only method that the building inspector's zoning enforcement officer had, or the health agent, or the conservation agent for violation of town bylaws, was to go to court. So the district court clerks around the state suggested legislation under chapter 40, section 21D for non-criminal ticketing. So the purpose for that is to send someone a ticket, give them sort of a wake-up call, you're violating the bylaw, please, you know, take care of it, stop violating it. And then the next step, you don't have to issue tickets for a year, with all due respect to Mr. Tomo.
No, I think that you're right, you're absolutely right, I miss over...
I would suggest that if you start issuing tickets one week, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, someone's just ignoring you, they're going about their merry way, and the next step, you go to district court, you don't even need an attorney. Mr. Tomo can go to the desk, fill out an application for criminal complaint in longhand, or type it up, that was then be set down for a hearing before clerk magistrate to decide whether it's probable cause to issue a criminal complaint. If there's a criminal complaint, then the next step is you appear before a judge, and you're arraigned on a criminal complaint for violation of Brookfield zoning bylaw. Now, if that doesn't get Mr. Hulcraft's attention, at the same time, you can go to Superior Court, file a request for preliminary injunction, you give the other side three days' notice, you win before a judge, and you say, "Your Honor, the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer issued a cease and desist order, it hasn't been complied with, he's ignoring tickets, he's ignoring the district court, we want an injunction." I can tell you, having been before courts on these matters, if you're violating a bylaw and you didn't appeal it to this board, the judge is going to say injunction granted, period. You're violating a bylaw, the public interest is served by respecting town bylaws. So you could have a group of tickets. Now, if Mr. Hulcraft does not appeal those tickets issued by Mr. Tomo, Mr. Tomo can go to court and seek criminal enforcement of the tickets, in addition to seeking criminal prosecution for violation of the bylaw. So if Mr. Hulcraft is, does as he's done in the past, which is basically to ignore, he didn't take an appeal from the cease and desist order, that's fine. He hasn't come back to seek an extension of special permit, special permit's expired. If he ignores the tickets, those are final, and the zoning enforcement officer can go to the clerk's office and say, "I want to enforce the tickets from July 1 to whatever day, because there's been no appeal and no payment." The clerk magistrate will set up a criminal hearing for enforcement of the tickets. So those are the methods of enforcement to try to get the attention of somebody who's just ignoring you, and frankly, it's a case where, when I've been involved, you have to start chasing them, because they want to keep ignoring you and pretend that they can do whatever they want to do. And frankly, from what I see going on here, Mr. Hulcraft doesn't care about the requirements of the town zoning bylaw or the cease and desist order. He's going to force Mr. Tomo to continue chasing him with tickets and court action, cause the town a legal expense, for town council to go to Superior Court. Frankly, if you go to a clerk magistrate's hearing to issue a criminal complaint, the DA's office handles the criminal complaint. You don't need Copeland and Page. It's suddenly a criminal matter, Commonwealth versus Mr. Hulcraft, violation of town zoning bylaw. So there are methods available to correct this situation bringing it live.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm going to second your motion in regards to continuing and seeking town council's opinion?
No, no, no. Chairman, committee, Chair of the planning board, I believe the last meeting of this body was to hear an appeal to a cease and desist order from Mr. Donald O'Clair, who owns the property next to, and many of you are familiar with this, the town transfer station. Mr. O'Clair is conducting a legal business there because his permit expired. He failed to show for that meeting, and I know because I was there to speak on behalf of the planning board. This same body voted to deny his appeal without going to Copeland and Page, without seeking further statements from Mr. O'Clair or from anybody. You denied his appeal on the spot. I suggest that this, that this matter be handled in the same way. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to point a clarification, was Mr. Hulcraft served notice, certified notice of this meeting as required two weeks in advance?
I have no, I have no documentation, but I just know that he was, obviously, he was notified at the meeting because he's contacted me.
And he was here.
And he was here.
There is a requirement for certified notification, he certainly had time to contact his attorney.
Mr. Chair, in regards to attorneys, it's, we're talking about simplifying, it's the plaintiff's attorney and the defendant's attorney, or the claimant's and the claimant's. We need to seek opinion from our councils, they're all going to have three different opinions.
Yes. And I feel that we, I'm sorry, but I think we need to talk to Copeland and Page, and that's, I'm sorry, but that's the way I feel about it, before I make a decision on this. This is a lot different than Mr. O'Clair, by any stretch of the imagination.
Are you afraid of him?
No. I'm hoping to get a picture with, up on the sign, I hope my name hits the sign, so I can get a picture. That's what I'm hoping for.
Only the man at the end of the table seems to see what the attorney is saying.
And he's the one that brought this situation to light.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, ma'am.
Not Mr., I didn't meet Mr. Snyder, I met the white-haired gentleman, and I don't know his name.
Somebody called me cotton top once.
Is that why you're in the head all the time?
You seem to be using your brain.
Mr. Wilson, point of information, you were on the zoning bylaw, the zoning board of appeals that granted Mr. Hulcraft both his permit and the extension back then, were you not?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Chairman.
Stand up and be found.
All right, I will. I think we need, there's two pieces to this, that I can respect your need for clarification from your, and I get that. The reality is, however, that Nick has already begun, as I understand it, that you're going to file today, not tomorrow, the fine process.
He's been, he's being fined right now.
He's being fined right now. So we've got two separate things that are going on.
And this, Mr. Snyder, this motion doesn't alleviate him from any...
That's where I'm going to go, because there's going to be some pretty angry people leaving this room tonight, if we don't have a real set process of what we're going to go and do moving forward. It is my position that Mr. Bracken supported me with, and I understand, and to your motion, that in fact, the permit for the operation, you didn't hear the word sign, the operation at Six, South Maple, 7 Dean High Street, expired in 2003. There were some caveats that you allowed in 2005, but at the end of 2005, he had no right for it to exist. If you wish to go talk to Jeff Blake and have him decide whether there's an extension, or whatever the risk is, fine, we can do that. What I think is important tonight is that we take the opportunity through the ticketing process, and I would like, Gary, please advise, as far as what's going on here, that he's already $425 in the hole, where he owes the town that, I mean, he owes the town lots of other dollars for lots of other things, but we'll get away from that for a moment, that what's the time period that we take him to district court or Superior Court?
No, Mr. Snyder, I will act on the direction of the board, the select board. I will go to court, I will go to East Brookfield, I will do whatever.
So the select one were to vote on Tuesday?
I'll go Wednesday, well, after the...
So that may be the answer. Mr. Chairman?
There was, he's got his hand up for a long time, so...
Mr. Fagin or...
One...
Oh, Mr. Fagin, you already had them...
One last comment. If you check in the selectman's office in 1995, plus or minus a year, the board of selectmen took Mr. Hulcraft to court at that time for open-air storage of junk and salvage material, so you might put that information in with whatever you're asking for, because it has to do with how Mr. Tomo, you know, what he can use.
Well, he is, he is also being fined for his property on that one.
Mr. Khan?
I think the main confusion here is that he, that he is being fined for violating the specifics of the bylaw when he should be ordered to get rid of the sign. That is, that if we're fining him for a violation...
Unfortunately, this is not about the sign.
The second principle uses, I think, is what he means.
That all of the uses, at this point, are in violation.
And that's the question that I have and that I'm concerned with, is about the special permit, whether it's run out or not necessarily with Mr. Tomo and his violations.
But should Nick be fining him for continuing the whole operation? Not for the three violations, but for even continuing to operate without a permit?
But we're not sure, I'm not 100% sure that that permit's known void, and that's the only question I have in my mind, is I'm not 100%, by the conversation I had with the Blake from Copeland and Page this afternoon, and that's the only thing that's holding me back, is my conversation that I had with that lawyer.
I'm not sure about that, I...
Yeah, so I'm not opposing going to K&amp;V, I think this board should have gone to K&amp;V much earlier, all the way along, and we haven't seen that.
I believe the zoning enforcement officer should have, myself, seek sudden opinion.
I think he needs the permission of the board of selectmen to do that, so all I'm saying is, it seems to be, keep the eye on Mr. Simon's point, which is, does he have any authority to operate, not whether he's in violation of these other small parts of the original permit, but whether he has any right to operate anything there.
And Mr. Snyder, I'd really ask you to reconsider a vote to allow Mr. Tomo to file criminal charges. We might be setting the town up for a huge liability, you heard him say.
They're dealing with it, Steve, for 50 years.
Yeah, I understand, but you heard a man threaten a lawsuit to the town. I don't, because it comes with money. If, but that's what we're doing, if we seek town council's opinion, then we can move forward. I would recommend that we find out what KP has to say before we move forward in regards to criminal complaints.
Mr. Chairman, just one point on that, once again, you have an enforcement order citing violation of three conditions, there's been no appeal, the deadline, it was issued on April 8th, he was given until June 30th to comply, that's two and a half months, he hasn't complied, he's in violation of that as of July 1, July 3, and today, every day in between. So with all due respect through you to Mr. Countoyes, I represent, I was city solicitor in Worcester for eight years, we were self-insured for liability, I don't see any liability whatsoever. If he didn't appeal the order, he's acknowledging that Mr. Tomo was right, at least as to the three conditions. Mr. Tomo can go to court tomorrow, next week, next month, whenever the selectmen authorize him, file an application for criminal complaint, there's no liability there. Mr. Hulcraft, frankly, is dead in the water because he didn't appeal the cease and desist order. Now, if this board, after consultation with town council, agrees with our position that the special permit is expired, then following up on Mr. Simon's motion, the whole operation has to be stopped, not just the three conditions. The whole operation has to come to a halt and everything removed, including the building, and if the sign that's up there, you're referring to the yellow sign, if the yellow sign was put up under the special permit, that's gone. If he doesn't have any other permit under the zoning bylaw, if he's got no other permission, if any one of these people live in a residential neighborhood or commercial neighborhood, if they have to get a permit to put up a sign, if he doesn't have a permit for the sign otherwise, I would suggest the yellow sign would have to be removed, and I'm not even worried about it.
And this is why we're at this juncture, so we need to, I am not voting on this until I speak to Copeland and Page, and as much as you go through this whole line, I'm not going to vote on anything until, after I speak with Copeland and Page. Mr. Chairman, can we put a friendly amendment to the motion that we set a timeframe to this?
Oh, absolutely.
What is, what's the limitation for, because we'd have to re-advertise another meeting?
No, you don't, Mr. Chairman, you just have to continue. As long as you've, as long as you've re-advertized for tonight, if you continue to a future date, there's no need for new advertisement, no need for new notice to a butters or anything else.
It's two weeks from tonight.
I'm thinking two weeks is the best.
So two weeks from tonight, friendly amendment, to reconvene with town council's opinion?
But in the meantime...
I have a question for Steve, since you mentioned that the yellow sign wasn't really the pertinent issue tonight, when did he get the permit for the sign? And I'm questioning that it's on the property...
Five, 1805.
Being used there.
Eighteen feet?
Why it's not included?
The sign, the permit was applied for on May 24th, 2005. The initial order of conditions, I think, stated a 27-foot sign, he applied for a 17-foot sign, so I believe it was in the original order conditions, that yellow sign.
The sign, he signed the charitable permit...
Well, I thought I saw another, right, number seven, that's tall.
I'm charitable, yeah.
I thought I saw one there, but that was the permit.
Was the sign a permanent sign for advertising his reason for having his building?
He's probably going to make that argument.
Or was it to do what he's been doing for the last ten years?
Mr. Chairman, on the permit, I don't think he had a reason for down on the permit for the sign.
Yeah, there's no reason for the permit.
There's no reason for what he wanted the sign to...
On the original special permit, it says a sign stating retail service for charitable reasons, which will conform to the town zoning bylaws. Number 10.
And the town zoning bylaw for that charitable limits the sign size to 16 square feet. That's a two-sided 4x8 sign, which is way over 16 square feet. It also says that it has to be 10 feet from the right of way. What's, what's the width of the right of way?
So as we go back to this again, we're going back to the whole crust of this, whether this permit still is viable or not, and this all, at that point, this is, this whole conversation is moving, if this, if this permit is... And this all, it, at that point, this is, this whole conversation is moving, if this, if this permit is not viable any longer, all of this goes away. And that's ultimately what this is about.
An argument could be made, I was, I was asking Charlie, there's another sign there, I thought that might've been a charitable sign. There might be an argument that that yellow sign was never meant to satisfy those orders of conditions, that it was just a permit that the building inspector issued.
That was the, um, right zoning enforcement officer, not the, the...
Peter.
Two hours, now, refer history to Mr. Fagin, although at some point the town passed the bylaw or some regulation prohibiting billboards. Is that all, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. That, because remember, we, we passed that, one billboard, that I wrote about is blue down, we didn't want to put it back down. That is a billboard. Billboard is defined as a sign on a property that advertises goods or services not on the same property. So, he's in violation there regardless of any of this. Going back to the other point of giving Coleman Page the opportunity to talk about the statute of limitations, if there was a statute of limitations applied with this, I am certain that his esteemed legal counsel would've thrown that at you the first chance they got.
Well, and that may be so, Peter, but, you know, I just wanna make sure that all our, you know, that our T's are crossed and our I's are dotted.
I understand, okay.
Beth.
Mr. Chair, one of the things that's also included in our zoning bylaws is that they're supposed to be an annual, in, in absence of another type of date or time period, there's supposed to be an annual recertification of any special permits.
I don't know that that's true.
That's what it looks like. So, it may be something that you may wanna include as part of the question of Coleman Page, is that it appears that whenever we issue a special permit, that the operator is respons, the operator is responsible for reapplying for that certification.
Okay, I will check with that man over there. There is a woman over here, yes.
So, what I was hearing was that this, the purpose of the sign, the common parker, has citizen in Brookfield for 27 years. What I'm hearing was that the purpose of the quote "yellow" sign was to promote the retail business, is that correct?
Wait, I'm gonna answer that, we, I don't think we know.
Then who read something that number 10?
But, but we don't know if that yellow sign was meant to satisfy that condition?
Or if that's just something he put up?
Mr. Chairman, we come back to the basic question that was raised by a couple of your...
Uh, no, I'm not done.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me. So, we know what he uses the sign for, and that's to publicly humiliate people, and I agree, to create a hostile environment. And so, I want to know, why isn't it being addressed?
And it will be addressed if this permit is legally, really, null and void. If this special permit is null and void, that's where it's gonna go. But we need to have legal counsel.
We have to ask the question if the yellow sign is part of it.
Part of it.
Because we, we've had several conversations with KP, and we got, as a selectman, I've had him, that, that, it's his freedom of speech to put whatever he wants on there. And we couldn't touch him.
But, Mr. Chairman...
We've had several opinions on that.
If I can just restate, the underlying question though, has been raised by a couple of your citizens, is what authority does he have? If he's not putting up the sign in conformance with the allowance under the special permit, as was noted, it says, "Conform to the town zoning bylaws." So, if that's four-by-four, 16 square feet, well, then it's, that's the limit. If he hasn't, not doing it under the special permit, what authority does he have to have the sign on the property if you've adopted a bylaw that prohibits billboards? If there's no authority, then frankly, he's not grandfathered in any respect. The special, if the special permit is expired and there's no permit for the yellow sign, the yellow sign should be ordered off the property.
Well, there, there is a building permit for the yellow sign.
Well, Mr. Chairman, like, number one, if you look at the building permit for the, the sign, it says, area of volume, four-by-eight, 32 square feet. My understanding is the existing fine sign is larger than that.
What is it, two sides?
And the question is whether or not that sign conforms...
That's, that's a, that's a separate, although it does say four-by-eight.
Yeah, but there's, yeah.
Then it says 325 square feet.
And let's see the, let's see the 325 or 32 square feet. That being the case, then, if he doesn't have a permit other than this for the sign, and that sign is larger than this sign, then the sign would be in violation of the special permit requirements and the building permit for the sign.
Well, the question lies in the fact that the building inspector signed off on it, and zoning enforcement signed off on it. So, we'd have to ask K&amp;K what, what we can do about that as well.
Everybody slide the paper.
Mr. Chairman.
One second.
We stay in 6:00 PM for two weeks from tonight?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I, I would request that somebody look at the setback requirement that's also in the original permit, that says 10 feet from the right of way. I believe the sign is within that dimension.
It says, you know, the setback would be something from the zoning. It's not on here.
We have an issue with the fact that there was a signed building permit.
Right. And does this fall under the special permit?
We should take a vote.
Yep.
Permit?
Just a logistic issue. Who is gonna go see Coleman Page? Who's not talking about the meeting?
I am gonna talk with Coleman Page, well, via emails and, and letters.
So, you will get something invited?
Yes.
Can, can counsel, Mr.?
Oh, he'll, he'll receive it, yes, oh, yes.
Before, before the meeting?
Well, yes. Providing that Coleman Page steps up the plate and does what they're supposed to do, yes. I mean, I have not, but they have two weeks at that point.
I have no doubt Mr. Blake will take care of it.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Uh, I have to ask, uh, Solicitor Brackett, is that the proper title? Attorney Brackett?
Attorney, yes.
In your opinion, given that, acknowledging that you're, um, representing one of the interested parties, does a signed building permit in your experience supersede a zoning bylaw?
No, the building inspector has no authority to issue a building permit for a sign that does not conform to your bylaw. And if your bylaw requires a special permit for a sign in certain zones, if your bylaw requires a variance, dimensional variance for a sign larger than otherwise allowed, then you have to get zoning relief. And only when the zoning relief is granted and the appeal period runs, then the building inspector could issue. But the building permit cannot supersede the zoning bylaw requirements.
Yes. I wanted to ask, uh, I, I see you're being very cautious, which is good, and I respect your decision to wanna do that, I think it's a good thing. But I also wonder about the continuance. Do we need permission from the person appealing, uh, asking for this, um, to allow us to continue? Or do we...
No, we have the right to continue the meeting.
So, we don't lose any power or authority by continuing the meeting in this sort of way?
Correct.
Okay, good. So, we're still on?
Yes. Clarence?
So, on, on that point, you're moving forward to get clarifications?
Clarifications from Coleman Page. So, two weeks from today, we'll be here at 6 o'clock.
Sounds like a plan.
Two weeks?
Page two, that there's a selectman's meeting on Tuesday evening. And it, it's my opinion that, that now that I understand that it really is a decision of course, to take the further action to District Court, I would be conferring with the remainder of the board as to taking that action, based on the earlier cease and desist.
That's, that's fine.
Just so we're clear. And further, clear that I was representing myself and I was not representing the Board of Selectmen this evening? Just so it's all clear to everybody?
Yes.
All right?
Representing us.
Marlene had a question.
Have you voted?
Yes.
You're representing us.
Thank you.
I have two questions. In two weeks, the meeting will recommence, what time?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
Yes.
And when and how will Mr. Holcraft be on the call?
I'm really not sure.
Through you, the chair.
I will call and text him. I will call and text him.
In writing.
In writing, yes.
Absolutely.
In writing.
Certified now.
Have you voted?
No.
Not yet.
Can we have a little point?
Yes.
I, I made the suggestion that you send this certified return receipt mail, because he can say he never got it yet.
Oh, yes, yep. Yes, sir.
I wanna go one step further and to have the letter, like we do with eviction notices, served by a constable. Because if you have a certified letter, you just don't accept it, and never, you never get it.
Yeah.
So, you have it served by a constable, who then will certify through the constable's stuff process, that they hand deliver it on a certain time and a certain date, then you know they got it. Whether you choose to open the letter or not, remains to be seen, but at least you can get it. Because we've played this game in real estate a lot, where the tenant just doesn't receive anything and doesn't accept it, and you have no recourse.
Yep, okay, thanks, Bob. Uh, I'd like to make, we have a roll call for the motion for us to seek, um, clarifications on the special permits from Coleman Page?
Yes.
Aight? All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious, would you also, if I'm here with Mr. Snyder at your next meeting, would you also be asking Mr. Blake to be here? Because if questions come up during the meeting, as opposed to...
Uh, I, I asked my conversation.
If I can just finish, if questions come up during the meeting, as opposed to having to continue again to get a further opinion, that if he's present, I mean, I attend meetings for my municipal clients, I'm there to answer questions on the spot, so you can make a decision.
That will decide what he says to me about the special permit, and then I will ask the, the town fathers if we can spend the money to have him come to the meeting.
I, I personally think it's gonna be cut and dry on an opinion that we're asking for.
But that, if, if it's, if there's any kind of gray area, then I will ask the town fathers to...
Fine, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second?
7:47. Was it the other one?
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
I don't know. You never know, you never know, you can sort of see people carrying pitchforks or something, you know?
Roger, how are you? How are you? Excuse me, excuse me, could you please exit the room, please, we have another meeting? Thank you.
Yeah, using the same methods, checking in. And a drop of the league. You know, you just, if you've got somebody down your business, that's a situation that there, I've got a case out in, out of Western Mass, Monday morning, someone was, someone had developed this septic system that failed, and they were pumping wrong sewage out of the house.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Mr. Countoyes.
Because we're afraid of them.
You don't feel afraid of anyone, do you?
No.
That's the only good thing my father's done.
Just hit things head-on. But, you know, if we don't do it right, it's gonna be all bad.
Let's do this.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Nice to meet you.
We got a meeting day.
Okay, we have another meeting day. Okay, I'd like to open a meeting. Uh, it is 7:48. Uh, the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a meeting, 7 o'clock, 7:48. Uh, Wednesday, July 19th, in Town Hall, banquet room on the first floor, for the purpose of hearing and considering a request from Joseph Huthlack to construct a new home at 21 West Street. This requires a variance as per square for Section 6, non-conforming land, uses and structures, Part A, Section 3, and Section 7, Dimensionally Regulation C, Dimensional Regulations Table, because it does not meet the requirement footage. Uh, the property is located in Business A District. Okay. Hello there, sir.
Hi, I represent, I'm a general contractor.
Okay.
We have a house there now, okay? And it's, doesn't really, um, structure's got some problems. We're basically removing that, you know, putting another house just about in the same footprint, except it's a little bit wider than the one that's there. And that's all my documentation I gave you. So, we're asking the permission to remove that house and stru, and, and construct a new one. And basically, it's going to be even a little bit less, um, from the frontage than the existing one. I sent you a copy of the, of, um, Para's, um, site plan that he did when he bought the house, and I also sent you a copy of Goby's, um, septic design that shows where the new structure's going. I don't know if you received that or not.
I just received it yesterday.
Okay. Uh, and I have a, I also sent you a copy of the draft of the house. I have the final plans, we'll be now.
Uh, no, I don't.
Chuck, do you have an ASBIL?
There'll be an ASBIL when, well, there's an ASBIL of the existing house, and there'll be an ASBIL of the new house when I get it done.
And you provide...
The ASBIL is, is, was done by, um, Mr. Para several years ago when they purchased the house. Just get my file out here.
So...
Do you have the ASBIL with you?
Uh, yeah, I attached it to my application.
So, I know you have a copy of the application.
Is that what this plot plan is?
This is Goby's. There it is. Um, first of all, I think I should give these notices that I sent out to the others.
Yes, we'll, we'll take them.
Let me give you the, I don't know if they all came back, there was nine of them, but here's the package, what I got.
Mr. Chairman, that was 21 West Main, right?
Yes.
You said 21 West Main.
Oh, I did?
No, 21 West Main. This is, I did attach this.
Yes.
But this is the, this was done, uh, by Mr. Para when...
This is the...
When he purchased the house.
Just a plot plan from the assessors' office.
Yep.
And this is, um, the existing house.
Property lines?
Yeah, he's, um...
This is the one?
Yeah. This is the, uh, yeah, this is it right here.
Does it extend?
Yeah, he, he owns all, he owns, it's a bigger lot. This is where the existing house is, and then it slopes down back here, and there's some wetlands back here.
That's the delineation?
Yeah. So, uh, he's got him 19 feet from this lot line, and I also have, um... Goby's plan, that it's gonna be 23 feet with the new structure.
That's the new structure?
Uh, I have, well, this is, yeah, this is, he, he did the, um, septic design, and, but the new, just the footprint of the new structure, uh, here, and the septic's in the back. And this is, yeah, this is, yeah, that's a little more.
So, you're actually farther from the...
Right.
You're putting any stacks or anything over, like this?
No, there, there's a porch on, let me show you the plane.
But it's still, it's still farther than, because he's, 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 from that point to that point, to this extent.
Right, there's a federal front coming out of the building, there's a porch, but it's all gonna be, this is the front.
Farther back, yeah.
And then, the only thing is, you see this line, this is the...
Existing.
In other words, it's gonna be...
be 52 feet away from.
Is it 25 feet in that zoning area, Chuck?
I think so. Side, side, it's 25.
Yeah, the frontage, because it's in a, it's 70 feet frontage, that, that's the cause.
This is considered frontage here?
Yeah, that's what they're considered the frontage.
But he's already pre-existing at 19.
Right. Yeah, and we're going to make it 23.
Yeah. There's no water around here.
No, the wetlands is back here. Let me give you.
That's where we would run across. It's like a problem.
This is the final plan.
Basically, you can't irrigate it back in the 80s. So, I can build this myself? Put a criminal pool that's, yeah, well, that's probably 800 feet off to the southwest.
I looked at his house, the building, 1836.
Oh, the house itself.
First, I first got involved.
But I only wanted, and.
I walked down there and.
That's environment, that's all.
I don't know, it's.
Would the committee like to have that for the files?
We already do.
Okay, you're doing it. Well, actually, thank, because I gave you a good summary, but we didn't make any changes, it's still the same, so.
As far as I'm concerned, you have to meet the setbacks with the ASBIL with the building inspector and zoning enforcement, we just have to give the, okay, to.
For the variance.
Right, that's why I'm here. I met with the zoning officer, and I met with Jeff, you know, and this is why I'm here.
Yeah, the key is to meet all the setbacks, which.
So, my, my, my opinion is that the town's actually gaining frontage and a better structure.
Definitely.
How old's the house?
I'll build 36. Yeah, there's some rocks, I mean, it's not falling down.
75,000 tomorrow. So, a lot of houses goes into the lot. I'm, I'm going to make a motion to grant the variance as proposed.
I will second that. All in favor of granting the variance as proposed? Yes.
That's another one we're going to be building, huh?
Yeah. So, I believe, I believe there's a 20-day build period.
Right. Michael, send you to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Sounds better, why not?
Yeah.
It says it sounds better, why not?
And I will, I'll look at it and ask them, once I get the foundation in.
So, I go to the building inspector?
They'll be the building inspector, and he, I think, I usually, if you want, I can drop a copy off the mic so you have it for your part.
It's a town of Brookfield, it's on their back, so.
I've done, you know, done just a lot with the BD, I try to get that in there.
Yeah.
Say, say, say.
Yeah.
Whatever the assessor has.
No, the house is right out the street.
Right away from down.
Yeah, the reassessors.
Okay, that's changed.
This is the street.
Make a motion to a chairman at 7:59?
Uh, no. No, I would like to make a motion to find a secretary to do our shorthand and notes.
Did you complain?
No, I'm not, I think I have, I have two people that are possibly involved, so if that, you know, if that's all right with.
Their expense or?
Yes. We will find the budget for that. Because for what little we do, I mean, we don't, we always return money, sir.
Can we find the budget before, if we have a budget?
Yes.
Yes.
For advertising and, and secretary. Yes, it is. There is. We always return money.
What are we talking for our way?
Well, it's probably going to be, I haven't got to that point, but I'm thinking it's going to be $14, $15 a night.
So, can I make a motion to allow the chair to research funds and applicants for our secretary?
Secretary Ross, sir.
Thank you very much.
You couldn't hear down here. So, Charlie wants to bring a secretary on board? So, my, my motion was to allow the chair to research funding and applicants that we can discuss at our next meeting?
Yeah, it'd be nice if she would be.
You mean in two, you mean in two weeks from now?
I mean, I'm so hot, I'm so hot, so I could really.
At our next meeting, we can discuss it, to see if we have the funds, first of all, and then what applicants are interested in.
Good idea.
So, we had a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You can vote for yourself.
Sure.
Can we, can we adjourn now?
Yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn, 8 o'clock?
Second, motion to adjourn, 8 o'clock.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Thank you for turning the notes.